Good evening and welcome to the September 19th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda tonight. Will we please have a moment of silence for those suffering from COVID, the war, the fires, and the floods? Okay, then we will have public service announcements. We have a presentation of a gift to the town from OSV. We have a continuation of a public hearing for Concord Brewery Incorporated doing business as Rapschallion. We also have a continuation of a public hearing for Class II and Class III dealers license from Kerboy Auto, Inc., Tobraca LLC/IAA. Town administrators update, department reports from the water and sewer. We have several action items. Common victrola license for Guido's Brick Oven Pizza, Inc., change of manager for the Kahula from Kim Chan to Steven Chan. Action for the board to authorize a chair to execute the contract with F&amp;N Contractors LLC in the amount of $31,297 for the Town Hall Storm Window Project. We need to ratify discussion and action to ratify a stipend for the finance director. This, we need to have a selection for the Board of Selectmen rep to sit on the Housing Partnership Committee. Consideration and action to appoint Larry Morrison to the Personnel Committee. Action to appoint Paula Copaz, Ph.D., to the Sturbridge Lakes Association Committee as the Lead Mine Lake Association rep. Action to reappoint Tom Chamberlain to the Trails Committee. Action to accept the letter of resignation from part-time firefighter Anthony Giuffredo. Action to accept the donation, the amount of $200, from CMG Environmental to the Sturbridge Fire Department. Consideration and possible action on the application for a transient vendor license for Wendy Collins/Gollins' gift for the Dahl &amp; Beh show at the Sturbridge Host on October 2nd. And we did have a last-minute application for a Hockern Pedler license from Alexandra Ables. Is that how you say your name, Alexandra? Ables, okay. Then we have old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens' forum, and then we have a request for executive session. So, public service announcements. Jamie, anything?
None.
Mary?
No.
Chase?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
I have none, other than another reminder. We've been getting a lot of them, but the pumpkins are coming Saturday. Okay. Now we have Chris Tieri from OSV. Chris?
Do I just?
Oh, no, it's just on.
Excellent. Oh, wow, you guys are a high tech. Well, thanks. I'm on behalf of Jim Donahue and everybody at Old Sturbridge Village. We, you may have known, we've been commemorating our 75th anniversary now for a year because, well, not only with COVID, but we just felt it was, it deserved a year-long celebration. And I'm here today to present a gift from the village to the town, just commemorating our partnership and how great we've worked together and how great you've always supported the village throughout the 75 years. I don't know that any of us were actually around when the village opened, so that was in 1946. So I want to just show you this redware pottery that our potters built, this did on their wheel. And redware is the common material used back in the 1830s, but for our anniversary, they were playing with other different glazes. So if you go into the store, you might see the red glaze, but this past year, we've had all different kinds of glazes. So this one's sort of more of a mustard color, so I'll just kind of.
That's beautiful.
No, very nice.
We got an individual one too?
No, it's worth more than 50.
So anyways, thank you to the whole community, and I'll leave this up here for you guys to see, but thank you to everybody for all the support you've given the village over the years, and we're hoping for another 75 more, so.
Well, thank you, Chris, and the village has certainly been good to the town also.
Great, great.
It's a two-way street, so tell Jim thank you.
I will.
Are you doing any more events for the 75th celebration?
Well, we wrapped up with, officially wrapped up with a gala in June, and it was like the best-attended gala we have ever had.
It was awesome.
Yeah, it wasn't it? It was under the, it was called Gala Under the Stars, and it was right on the Common at the village, which we've never done before. Huge tents. In fact, we had to get another tent because there was such a cry for people to come, so we really appreciate the support. Awesome, and come to our Halloween program, Phantom's by Firelight, it's going to be fun.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, it is.
Where are we going to put it?
Oh, we'll figure out.
I've had the pleasure of looking at it for about a month in my office.
We'll find a spot.
I said, oh, wait, they can officially.
Because we have, because we have a smaller plaque for the town's 250th in the office, all we did, so we'll, we'll find a spot. Robert will clear her desk off.
Yeah, I'll make room for that. That should go on the first floor somewhere for a while, if we can at least.
Right.
Put it downstairs somewhere.
Okay, so we do have a continuation of a public hearing for Concord Brewing Company doing business as Rapschallion for a change or alteration of premises. Okay, would you like to come down, please?
As a follow-up, I believe the planning board approved this change.
Yes. They only had one stipulation on another thing, the dumpster.
Yes.
Okay, would you please explain for the audience at home what it is you want to do?
Sure. Okay, so the entire project is that we want to open the downstairs, feel to serve at our downstairs bar. We are currently already open upstairs, and we also are asking for patio seating, for 24 patio seats, and to do that, we will be putting in fencing for the ABCC and also safety fencing around the patio seating to protect the patrons.
Okay, now, when you say patio seating, the front patio already has some. Now, what are you talking about for the side patio?
So there, so the side patio, if you, if you look at the side of the building, so where the parking lot is, on the side, you can put some small picnic tables or two top tables, but it is close, closer to the cars that are parked there. So we're going to put bollards in four and a half feet apart. The parking spaces are nine feet wide, so they'll go in the corner of the parking space, in the middle, and at the edge. So there'll be three bollards per parking space, and then we'll have actually wooden fencing connecting those as well.
Okay, now, I noticed on the letter from Planning Board, it says can accommodate 24 patrons, but your rough sketch shows 28 seats.
This is parking, the 24?
No, seats.
Oh, oh, the patio seating, correct, correct.
Well, which is it, 24 or 28?
I think it's.
It's 24.
24 should be what we applied for.
Yep.
So which on the sketch are you not going to do now that I can't find the sketch? Does anybody have their sketch?
Page 26 and 27, as long as sketches I have.
Yeah.
Right here, ma'am?
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Four seats.
This is the one we have with six tables of four and then two tables of two. So if you're only going to have 24, you have to eliminate one.
Right, yeah, our tech might have placed an extra one by accident, so we'll make sure that is accurate.
Ari draws like me.
He did, in all fairness to him, he did have to edit it quite a few times, so it's, we'll cut him a little slack.
And is the building inspector satisfied with the bollards and the fence in between?
Yes, when we met with the planning board, we went through all of that, and they were fine with that. We actually had to submit and explain the entire thing, how deep they were going to be, where they were going to be placed, and they, they approved that.
Right, because we've been waiting a long time for this information.
Right.
As a matter of fact, I'll add a caveat to that, too long, you know?
Yeah, we're sorry we missed the last meeting, it was a miscommunication on our part.
Yeah, but this has been going on well before that. I mean, the planning board expected to see you people in January.
Right.
And we got your application originally in July, so.
Right, right.
I think everyone was stretched a little bit thin, and that's sort of, they've added some personnel, myself included.
Yeah.
Because of that, so.
I'm just expressing.
I can assure you that this will not happen in the future.
No, I'm just expressing my opinion, because we do have to look out for the safety of the public.
Of course, of course, you do.
And they have been drinking outside with no protection on the driveway side, so you have liability insurance, but the town is also liable.
Right.
If we know you're serving and we continue to let you serve, so just to get that off my chest.
No, so honestly, so I saw your, your comment in the paper, and that's actually what, I said, what, what is this? And it sort of just brought it all back, so I actually appreciate making that comment because it brought it to my attention, and we were able to take care of it, so.
Thank you.
And we'll be taking care of this within one month. We already have the spray paint, they've already come, DigSafe has already been, so we're already moving very quickly to get those bollards into place.
Right, Planning Board will check it out.
Yes.
Shane?
So I'm in a water department, I was curious how deep the bollards are going to be, because one of the mugs is right up on the water service.
Yeah, they were looking at it today, DigSafe and Spencer Paving, you know, Warren? So he'll be doing the work, and he's already visited, and so I think it's going to be two to three feet deep into the ground and then three feet high.
Yeah, it's two feet deep, and.
One of them was right, like, right on top.
It's too close, so we've, we were actually talking about that before we came here, and it is going to move a little bit.
As long as you're aware of it.
Yeah, we are. Yeah, sure.
We don't want a lot of fountain.
No, we do not.
Especially not now.
Questions, comments from the board? Mary?
Um, yeah, I just have a comment. I mean, I agree with Mary, and she's right, but I do want to say, I'm so happy that you decided to stay in Sturbridge after you left Highland Location, because you're the really popular spot, and residents really do love having you right there. So I'm glad that you stayed in Sturbridge.
Thank you. And we love Sturbridge, so.
It was a long search, it's, it's been years, because we knew Highland had a limit, you know, a time period that we were going to leave. And we were a bit down and out there during COVID, like, can we find the right place? So we're, we're thrilled to find.
It's.
Yeah, and to renovate an old 1800s barn.
Yeah.
We enjoy projects like that, and, you know, and it was a great project, and it's, people enjoyed it, so. And, and as OSV here said, you know, we're, they're such a huge part of the town, but I can speak on behalf of the hospitality venues, that's a huge relationship.
Oh, yeah.
We just, we, we, we host so many people that are in town for Old Sturbridge Village, and vice versa, if they're in town at a hotel and they're asking us what to do.
Direct them there, yeah. No, it is.
Yeah.
That's what the town's about, working together.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You know.
And Sturbridge is unique, and, you know, I'd say this to so many people, 50, 60 of the establishments, most of them are independent.
Mm-hmm.
You really can't get that, you know, 1,000 hotel rooms or somewhere around there, it's, it's a unique arrangement, and, I mean, besides going to maybe Northampton or Worcester, you really can't get that destination-type town size here, you know?
Yeah, no, we're fortunate.
Hope you stay as busy as you are.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the board? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience have a comment or a question? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have to take a, yeah, but, I mean, you're.
You don't have to sit there.
You can tell.
Sorry.
I will make a motion to approve the change or alteration of premises. Information has laid out the application before us at 484 Main Street for Concord Brewing doing business as Rapschallion.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Michelle has to send it to ABCC, and then we'll come back and we'll sign.
Hundred percent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, still past the time, so we can, next on the agenda was a continuation of the public hearing for a Class II and Class III dealers license from Kerboy Auto, Inc., Tobraca LLC/IAA Corporation for 71 Mashpug Road, Sturbridge. Did everyone just get that email?
Yeah.
Okay, my feeling on this is I would like to close the public hearing and deny the transfer and have them reapply. No one is here from them, we have no more information. The only information we got was from their lawyer, who just said they wanted to go ahead with the information they had provided before, and as you know, from conservation and other people, there were things missing, so that's my thought on it. Anyone else's thoughts?
I totally agree with Mary.
I think we've been more than patient, and the information's just lacking.
I mean, I'd go a step further and say it's entirely inappropriate for them to make an application, not communicate for us for two months, and then all of a sudden just send an email the day of saying we're not doing.
Only because they were asked.
Yeah, and, and the reality is, is the people came here, but their timing to come to this, they cared about it for their, their neighborhood, and it's unprofessional, it, it makes me think more ill of the project than perhaps I would have just natively, you know, just a front base, and if they come forward again, they better have everything prepared.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion then to close the public hearing and deny the license transfer?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, Robin, you'll let the.
Yes.
Well, you know. Okay, thank you. Okay, town administrators update?
Just one, one briefing, just want to inform the board, I had mentioned this actually to Selectman Donegan. I was approached by a pastor of a church in Charlton who is looking to get street hockey boards and establish an area where we could have regional street hockey league, and I reached out to Selectman Donegan because word through the grapevine is that he's active in adult hockey leagues and whatnot, so he confirms that there is a need for this?
I thought it was great, I think there'll be interest from some of the hockey families for their kids for a, like, a rec program or something like that, and that there may be things beyond that, and it does just make more opportunity for our rec department. I know they had attempted it in the past, and it didn't catch on, or there wasn't as much interest as they thought, but I think hockey has grown a lot since that last attempt, so.
So I'd like to, if, as long as the board's comfortable, just draft a letter of support to the pastor, because what I've suggested to him, he wasn't sure of where to go to funding, so I gave him some ideas on going to the state legislature for earmark grants, for example. I spoke to him about possibly going to his labor unions throughout Charlton, some of the local labor unions might support this, some of the leagues might support this, so I gave him a few ideas on funding sources, but if he does do that, particularly for the state legislature, I didn't know if it would be, if the selectmen would be comfortable having a letter of support saying Sturbridge supports the concept, because our residents would be able to use. I did confirm with him, there would be no price difference for usage for Sturbridge residents versus Charlton, for example, it would be equal access. He would also open it some nights to open play, so pick up games and things like that. So if the selectmen are comfortable having me draft a letter that I can bring in front of you to, to vote on once I draft it, that he could just keep as he's looking for grants.
Right, no, I'm sure we'd all like to see the letter, and as far as support, support of the concept, because, I mean, there's a whole ballgame of where, when, who's going to run it.
And Annie, Annie, Annie sat in with me on the meeting, she indicated that from the recreation side, it's absolutely something she thinks would be beneficial as well.
I think it's great they're not going to fade her at Charlton or Sturbridge.
Yeah, that was important, I said, you know, I said, the only way we can publicly support, if you're asking, because he has different state reps than we do, I believe, so, you know, if we're going to sort of do this crossover support, there has to be equal access for us.
And most, most of the kids that play hockey from Sturbridge also play with kids from Charlton, Oxford, the whole area, because they, most of them have to go to Marlboro or Auburn to play, so.
Nice.
Yep.
Okay, so.
That's it for me.
Okay, department reports, water and sewer, Shane? Good evening.
So I'm going to start with, on May 10th of this year, I attended the Massachusetts DEP Award Ceremony on behalf of the town, and Veolia Water, the Water Department was recognized for the third time in the last nine years for outstanding performance and achievement. There's two sets of the plaque, and I wanted to give one to the board tonight, I've got one in my office, so I'd like to do that right now.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you and congratulations. Oops.
I'll jump right into the monthly reports, and I'll just get to the, you know, the most glaring issue is, obviously, we're pumping a lot of water, and we haven't pumped this much water probably since when I first started here, and, you know, 16 years ago, but we got a lot going on, too. You know, we got two 500,000 gallon storage tanks now up off of Route 20 and up on Pick Road, and we got the, our V-Park, and they're using quite a bit of water, and we're in the middle of a drought, right? People are going to use more water. And down at the job on Route 20, the Sturbridge Big Dig, they're using a lot of water because they're backwashing their filter to treat the water that they got to pump over, so it is eye-plopping, it's a 40% increase from, you know, what we were using last year, but we watched the way the tanks fill and the way they drop, and I believe it's legit, legitimate use, I don't think we have any big leaks or anything like that, so I figured I'd just get right into that and point that out. With that being said, if there's any other questions on the monthly reports, I'd be more than happy to answer them right now.
No, I'm glad you explained that, because it was quite a bit of 32.4% from last August, so it's quite a leap.
Yeah.
Okay, questions from the board?
And it's actually a good thing, right? Because we need the revenue.
I know, we get them.
As long as I can account for all the water at the end of the year, which we're usually under 3%, which is well within the limit, I think that, you know, we'll be fine, I believe that I'll be able to do that.
I just, where, where are we at with the large capital projects, the generator and the, and the filter tank and the other stuff?
So we've met with the engineers, we've gone over everything, and we're waiting for proposals back from them, so, and here's the thing, right, there's so much money out there right now that the engineers just are so busy, so getting them to respond, so we are working on it and making some progress. We actually had another meeting with one engineer on the Stallion Hill tank, because that's some work we're going to have to do up there in the future, and we met with another engineer today on fixing the concrete repairs at the wastewater plant and doing the coating work, so we're, we're working on it. The Maple Street stuff, too, is, that's moving forward, but there's some things that need to be taken care of with the grant money, so that's probably not going to happen until spring at the earliest at this point, so, so things are moving along.
Good.
Okay. After Mass DOT got done paving Route 131, I was not happy with the way the sewer manholes were left and the water gate boxes. I wrote an email to Heather, who forwarded to DOT. Emails went back and forth between us and the contractor, Heather backed me the whole time. We finally had a meeting with Mass DOT last week, and they will be coming back to repair all the manholes and bring them up to grade and take care of those issues, and also fix the water gate boxes. We have to provide structures, which we've had all along, and it's just something we just weren't going to let go, because, you know, anyone that drives down 131, it's horrible, and it's, we shouldn't have to tolerate that, so Mass DOT committed to come back and fixing them, and they will be doing that before the paving plants close this year, is what we were told.
Hmm.
Okay, so that should, you'll see them out, when you see them coming back. We got one or two that we got to fix that, did we really, was it really our fault? No, but, give a little, take a little, so we got a couple we got to fix ourselves on the water block side, but the manholes is all on them, and they will be coming back and taking care of those issues, so I'm, I'm happy about that.
I'm definitely very happy.
Yeah, I'm, you know, some, yeah, and, you know, especially people on motorcycles, and it gets wet, and, you know, and then the other thing, too, is the trailer trucks start pounding those, and then they end up breaking, and then you're out there in the middle of the night, and someone's car hit one, so I was glad to see Mass DOT own, own up to it, and, you know, they got, like I said, they said they're going to come take care of the problem. Water ban, obviously, we're going to stay in that till the end of the month, that's what we're required to do by permit. We do, our wells are doing well, they're recovering well, even though we're pumping all this water, so we'll probably come out of the water ban in beginning of October, because I want to get out and start flushing hydrants, and then, I know it sounds early, but preparing for winter, so we'll be, we'll be doing that in early October also. And besides that, it's pretty much been business as usual, so that's pretty much all I have for you this evening.
If I could add, I'd, I'd like to thank Shane and Heather, they took me on a tour of all the water and sewer facilities. We, I think we have, went to every sewer pump station, we went to all the water.
She went to the water plants and the sewer plant.
And the sewer plant, and, and really, it's an amazing operation, it's, it's a solid operation, but it also gave me a chance to talk to Shane and look at what, on a five-year horizon, for capital, we need to really sit down and look at to make sure it stays as solid as it is, because there are some areas that, that, as you mentioned, the water tank up on Stallion Hill, and some of the issues potentially in the sewer plant, but we'll sit down and really work going through with Heather, now that Heather's on board and got her feet really wet as well, on a long-term plan.
And actually, the screen is finally in, came back from the manufacturer, that's scheduled to be put back in next week, and then we'll probably have to pull the other one out and budget to repair that one, too. So everything's moving forward, it's just, to get anything nowadays just takes so long, it just, it prolongs the projects forever, but that's just, that's just the way things are right now.
Everywhere.
And with everything.
Yep, yep. Everyone should take that tour.
You, you should, because to understand how the process works, and to understand why sewer rates are sewer rates and water rates are water rates, there is so much complexity, so much environmentally that has to be done properly to preserve the environment, particularly on the sewer, the wastewater end of things, I mean, when you're talking about water going back out into the system, what has to happen, and the importance of that process, and getting clean water out of your faucet doesn't just happen by accident.
Right.
I think we've, we've turned water on and we flush toilets, and we really don't ask ourselves.
What?
Where it goes, and we pay the sewer bill, and we kind of, here's another bill, another tax, but it really is something to, to look at, and I, I, I just, on a, on a personal front, I, I think wastewater, to me, weird as it sounds, is fascinating, the whole process is amazing, and has to be done so accurately, so precisely, so, yeah, people should, everybody should take that tour and take a look at exactly how complicated.
Well, there's been a couple of times in the past, I don't know if you were here, Shane, when they did have open houses for the general public.
Yeah, we've had the schools come through a few times, I know Chase has toured the wastewater plant.
Yeah, and then there was one time that all the selectmen were invited, and.
So, you know.
It's not, it's not a bad idea for people to really understand, it's.
Yeah, because Governor DeWolfe came out for some special thing on it.
He came out before we started the upgrade.
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
Very good water, having some radio, no aftertaste.
Good water.
It's good water.
She just has it in a bottle that.
It's in a plastic bottle.
No, no, this isn't, it's not home of spring.
Don't test the PFAS, don't, don't test the PFAS out of the plastic bottle.
No, it's a Sturbridge tap water, but I, I recycle, you know, I recycle.
And I, I guess I should have mentioned.
Holding it up.
We've completed the PFAS testing, we're, we're good on that aspect of it, I think we have to repeat one that we did in January because of a detection limit issue, but right now, we're not showing any PFAS, and just some neighboring towns that have that issue, and I know what it's costing them, let's just be glad we're not going to go down that road.
Millions and millions of dollars to remediate that.
Oh, yeah, it's.
Just so people are aware, the Massachusetts legislation on this is so much more restrictive than what the EPA even suggests, it's literally a drop in an Olympic-sized swimming pool, for lack of, I mean, Shane, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, it's, it's so minimal, and it's less than what you get probably out of that Poland Springs bottle if it gets hot.
Yeah, it's pots, you're in pots per trillion now, not million per trillion, so it, it is strict, and those are the rules, and I, for one, am glad we don't have to go down that road, and I think the rate pay should be, too.
Huge.
Okay, anything else from the board? Thank you, Shane.
Hey, thanks, have a good night.
Thank you.
Yes, you too. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request for common victrola license for Guido's Brick Oven Pizza, Inc.[1792.13] Hmm?
Teddy's not here.
No. Well, we've done common victual licenses without the proponent. However, when he mentions a patio, I for one would like to see where the patio is, because he already has his liquor license. Well, we can always make contingent upon getting it, because he's not ready to open yet, so. I mean, if we so vote. Any questions, comments from the board? Someone want to make a motion, then?
Sure. I will move to approve the common victular license for Tito's Brick Oven Pizza, Incorporated, contingent upon receipt of the plan for the outdoor patio.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have consideration and possible action on the change in manager application filed by Chung Mei Incorporated, doing business as the Kahula Restaurant, from Kim Chuen Chan to Stephen Chan. Good evening. Good evening. Now, is this the original change of manager that was applied for?
Original as in many years ago?
No, a couple of months ago?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, because I thought the last name was different. Oh, okay, thank you. I read too much.
So, yeah, I'm here, I guess, our previous manager, since COVID, has left us, and I am, the restaurant's owned by my family, my mother right now, so I am here back to take over the business, I guess, or to run it. And I guess we need to make the change of manager.
Right, right. And will you be serving any of the alcohol, too, as you manage?
Serving as in me, myself, or if need be, but mostly, I'm gonna oversee.
Okay, are you tip certified in that case?
I am.
Okay, and I assume all your help is, too?
Yes. I have to double-check with, because we just hired three new people. Since we closed down, we lost our bar manager, who's been with us for over thirty years, forty years, and our other head server retired. Everybody basically was in management position, retired. So that's why it took us so long to open back up, and we have, yeah, three new bartenders. So I know the head bartender is. The other two, I have to double-check.
Now, who's the head bartender?
His name is Stephen Simpson.
Yeah, see, that's the name I thought.
He's tip certified. He's worked plenty of places.
That's fortunate you were able to fill those three positions, because a lot of restaurants are having difficulty.
Yeah, it was kinda tough, but, yeah, we're happy we did it.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
I would like to add, Health Department is meeting with them this week. I guess Ken had a few questions, and is going to go back, and you weren't there, so he's gonna meet this week, so we will follow up as well with that.
Okay, that's their purview and not ours.
Yes. Just wanna give you an update.
No, it's nice to know. Trust me. Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the change in manager application filed by Chung Mei, Inc., DBA Kahula Restaurant, from Kim Chan Chan to Stephen Chan.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, a lot of people are glad you were open.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are, too.
Can imagine.
Good luck.
Okay, next is consideration and possible action for the board to authorize the chair to execute the contract with F and N Contractors LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars for the Town Hall Storm Window Project.
So we did a bid opening on this. These are a little bit over budget. We may be looking at different funding sources down the road, but the contractor was the low bidder on this.
We noticed tonight, there were no screens on these windows. Do you know why?
No, I don't know why. Yeah. Did they have them before?
We had them open before.
Yeah.
I know, but I'm surprised, because they're relatively new windows.
Robin, it says in the, in the note that this bid is under the budgeted amount of thirty-two six.
Oh, I'm sorry, this one was, okay, yeah, we had a nursery. I'm sorry, we had another bid opening that same day. No, we're good, we're good.
Yeah, because it was budgeted, I think, thirty-two thousand.
Yes.
Okay, questions?
Sorry about that. We had two open that night, that day.
Questions, comments? Motion?
I will move to approve the contract with F and N Contractors LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars for Town Hall Storm Window Project.
I will second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, is consideration and possible action to ratify stipend for the finance director?
So I had a bit of an emergency situation over Labor Day weekend. We had a large number of school hirings coming, come in. And as you may or may not know, we had a brand-new person start about a week or two before in the finance office, and the other position is vacant. So there has been nobody for about a month who knows how to do payroll for the town as a whole. And Barbara has, obviously, had to learn the nitty-gritties of it. She understood conceptually how it works, but she had to get into, actually, do the payroll itself. So she spent a good portion of Labor Day weekend in doing payroll and uploading all the new hires from the schools. We may have one or two more weekends where this happens, because she's coming in on the weekends to do the payroll portion. We have advertised the job. We've had several applicants for the job. I believe she was going through to try to set up some interviews for this week. So we're kind of behind the eight ball, because it's, I realize that the finance director's position is a salaried position, and typically, we do not give stipends to salaried employees. However, given that this is another full-time position that's not full, and she's trying to get this done so that we make payroll, which I really kind of don't have a choice but to make payroll, we're in sort of a challenging situation. It's a little uncomfortable, because we don't give salaried employees stipends, and we have other people who work a huge number of hours. But this situation's been a little bit unique, because it's actually a position that is vacant, that the work has to get done. And it is a completely separate position, let's say, from what the finance director would normally do under any of her day-to-day work.
I do have a problem with this, basically, because when you're a salaried position, you're salaried to do a job. Doesn't matter how many hours it takes, or how few hours it takes. We went through this once before, when we did totally have a vacant position in the accountant department. This time, though, the people have been in there. It wasn't totally empty positions downstairs. She's also, I believe, hired someone to come in and help.
Yes, that person can come Tuesday afternoons and Friday afternoons.
Yes. So I personally am going to abstain from voting on this. I think it sets a bad precedent for the other salaried employees. There are a lot of salaried employees who do a lot of extra work, and they ask nothing, because they understand what a salaried position is. Just my thoughts. Anyone else?
I kinda wanna echo your thoughts, Mary. I, I'm concerned about the precedent going forward with the other salary employees. You know, for instance, you know, our town planner has come in a bunch of times. Our town clerk, when there's election, comes in. Building inspector, when there's an emergency. And I think this sets a precedence that I'm not sure we really wanna go down.
And I understand, I'd ask at minimum at least the ratification of the action for Labor Day weekend. We were kind of in a bind at that point. I had to get payroll done.
I realize payroll had to be done, but did it have to be done that quickly for the new school employees?
Well, I, you know, I spoke to the superintendent, and she said, well, some of the new ones could wait. But they did get on the payroll in time. I just, I kinda felt it in a position with payroll, if it's not gonna get done in time, particularly over that weekend, with Monday being the holiday. I was, I was in a little bit of a tough situation there. We could, on a go-forward basis, say, you know, in the upcoming's not, but the ratification of the action, I would at least request.
Yeah, but I, you know, there's no dollar amount.
Yeah, well, that's gonna be my question. I don't even know.
Was it two thousand dollars? A two thousand or twenty-one hundred was the amount.
I mean, Mary and Chase are not wrong. I mean, I know when, you know, everybody has to come in. It is a little different when, when that job is unfilled right now, who's in that office.
Yes.
So I wanted to know the amount, because does that amount take into account that she is going to have help that she hired? I mean, so I guess I'm asking you this, you know, Robin, how did you arrive at that amount of money? Because if I'm in favor of this, if I will be prepared in another department, if they lose somebody, and they are going to be, you know, well within their rights to say, you know what, I.
So that's.
So, and I'll be prepared to do that if I feel like the salary stipend is, the stipend is.
Based on something?
Appropriate, you know?
So I believe the, the person that came in to help is coming in at a consulting fee of seventy-five an hour. And so the finance director put in for a hundred an hour for those twenty hours that weekend.
A hundred dollars an hour?
For the twenty hours that weekend. That's where the twenty-one hundred came from.
I, I think that this, I'm not, I don't feel, I hear what everybody's saying, and I tend to agree with them. But I think it's not that I have an issue when someone short-staffed, and we have extra dollars, because we're not paying someone else, and they're doing something like payroll that has to happen. But I, we can't do it ad hoc. It has to be a structured approach. It has to be, like, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against this, but it's just like, it's to Mary's points, like, if there's things that you, Robin, deem essential, that is appropriate, generally, I'd imagine I would support that, but I need to have a paradigm by which to do that.
And I, it's, it's a challenge, because I can't mandate somebody necessarily come in on a weekend. I, and it's not that she's not working full days. It does work hard, all day, full days. So the challenge I kind of faced on this, on accepting it on that one, is, okay, the days are full. There's not enough time in the rest of the week to get that done, even with the assistance of the other person. That person did help process. I will also say, I don't wanna get into personnel issues, so we're missing the assistant treasurer's position, and then the new payroll position that was sort of needed. The assistant treasurer who left had been doing payroll. There was a lot, as I understand, that was left not completed, that needed to be corrected, fixed, whatever the case may be. And that's what that outside person is doing predominantly, is trying to go through and rectify some of the things that hadn't gotten done toward the end before somebody else left. So it's a little bit of a unique situation, and that I absolutely agree. I mean, in the wintertime, a public works director comes in. If we have four snowstorms in a row, she's gonna be here Saturday nights, Sunday nights. That's her job, and that is part of it. But in this particular case, because budget-wise, there are positions that are not being paid right now. I'm not looking at a budgetary issue, and I'd have to be paying somebody to do this. I would have had, and frankly, to be honest, I don't think she really wanted to come in and do it. It wasn't a case of trying to get the money. I asked, I actually made some phone calls. I called my old town to see if they knew of anybody who could come in and do this on a consulting basis. I reached out to four or five people myself to see if we could find anybody who could come in and assist.
Would it be reasonable to pay what we're paying the consultant? Because at least in that respect, we have a standard, so that if it happens in another department, let's say, I mean.
Barbara's an incredible worker, as is, as is all, really, all our departments. The team's, the team's trying.
But if it happens in another department, and they have to hire a consultant, then you can at least say, well, you know, we'll compensate you for what we would have to pay somebody else coming in. But to pay a premium, then how are we, you know, justify the premium? Because if it's a consultant someplace else, maybe it's only gonna be fifty dollars. And then why are we gonna pay? So then we, what do we do? Pay seventy-five, twenty-five more, because she got twenty-five more?
Or do you agree that it's a straight time, if you, if you were to ever do that again, that it's simply straight time on that person's hourly wage?
Or whatever her salary is.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, right away, we're already going to the idea that we're anticipating maybe this'll happen with other departments and everything, and that's one of the problems.
I understand.
And I would tell you, I've never given, I have never given a stipend to a salaried director in the past. I don't recall having ever done that.
Have you ever had this kind of situation?
I have not had a situation where I had literally nobody in a department who could do a job, who could do a certain, I mean, this was a little bit unique in that this isn't just a lot of work. This is the people who were doing the work are gone. And that was sort of where I said, okay, what do I say? I can't mandate somebody come in on a weekend, when the person's already worked probably fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five hours during the week. You know, I've added, you know, we talked about extra vacation time and things, when she covered a separate job in an accountant, which is a totally separate job. But this was a little bit different, in that it hit on a Labor Day weekend. It's not work the person really wanted to be here doing, and we needed payroll. I could ask the board to say that, you know, going forward, it's not acceptable in the next couple weeks. I mean, we, I don't know if she came in this weekend to do payroll or not. I think she may have been talking about doing it this weekend, because, again, it's not a job that can necessarily get done time-wise during the week. We are looking at restructuring some of the work out of that office. We're moving the water sewer billing over to DPW to alleviate some of the billing issues that come out of that office, because that is a problem, time-wise. I just, I, it's just critical we staff the positions. That's the bottom line of all of it.
I think, I think a little bit of it could have been.
Avoided.
Avoided, planning ahead a little. And I think, you know, with the school people, that it was not necessary to do them right away on payroll.
They waited a payroll week.
You know, I mean, Barbara, that's a little extra she did, but I still am going to abstain on the vote. Well, depending on what the motion is.
No, we already got you the position.
You got the position.
If anybody wants to do a motion that Mary's not gonna vote for, do it.
I should say that, because I do. I mean, salary, salary. Was it extraordinary? Yes. Could it happen again? Yes. There are a few departments where, you know, people love to hear this. They'll say, oh, I'm gonna be next. And so anyways, anything else from that end? Okay, somebody wanna make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll put something up there for discussion purposes. I'll make the motion that we approve a stipend in the amount of seventy-five dollars an hour, consistent with what we have to pay the consultant, and only because there is a vacant position within that department. And would not support a stipend, simply because somebody has to come in on the weekend if all the positions are filled. So what I'm trying to say is, you know, just because, because I am gonna try to avoid this situation where someone says, I have to come in on a Saturday and get this done, I'd like a stipend, too. It's because it's pretty much empty in that, in that office right now.
It's doing specifically.
I can't pay a premium. Usually consultants charge more, so I can't, I just have to have a standard for payment.
Phrase it with what I think you're going to go at. You'd have to say, to specifically do the work of another position. It's not of a vacant position. Yeah, it's not picking up more of your own.
But this, that's the issue, though. It isn't that this in and of itself is a bad idea. It isn't that this wasn't, there isn't a need for this particular type of functionality, but you can't do this and then not consider what's gonna happen for the next part. And I'm not even, I, you know, and I honestly, I didn't even know what this item was when I read through the packet. I kinda guessed, but I didn't know it was something that we had mandated, which I do think is different, that the town minister is telling you, have to do it. That's different, as opposed to picking up another work when you're a manager. It's within your normal job. Being basically forced is being forced. And I think we have to, I don't, I just don't think, I don't have my thoughts organized on how I'd even frame it, so I'm not really comfortable voting for it tonight. I think we need to flesh out, if we're gonna do things like this, what that, what that looks like. I almost said, what the hell that looks like. I don't know why I got mad.
Didn't sound mad that looked like.
But I just think, does that make sense, or do I sound?
Oh, no, that's reasonable. Robin, I have a question. Did you tell her she had to come in and do the payroll, or did she do it of her choosing? Did you tell her she had to come in and do the payroll or did she do it of her choosing?
Well, she indicated to me that she was going to have to come in over the weekend and that it would have to, there would have to be some compensation for her to come in over the Labor Day weekend. And I agreed to it at that point because frankly, I need payroll done.
Did you agree to her stipend amount that you?
I did, at that point.
You did?
Yep. I did at that point, but again, going forward.
Okay, so we obviously really don't have a.
This is a ratification of the action, but.
If we promised her it and then she.
Yeah, that's why I was at kind of a bind because it had to go, it went into last week's payroll. And then I realized that it had to come in front, right? The board does not have to.
But our, but our agent did. We have entered into a contract.
So the problem I ran into was it went into the payroll, it came up on payroll, I signed off and realized I didn't have time after I did that to get it in front of you, which is why it's a ratification of an action.
Oh, then I.
So what I would say is then we don't go forward on any other, I won't sign off on any future ones. If she did come in over this weekend, I have not signed any payroll item for this week.
Well, if we promised her, that's an entirely different conversation. I thought it was more of a negotiation on the other side. I didn't understand it was the front end. So, yeah, no, I, you said $2,100?
I think it was $2,100, I believe it was, 2108 or 2100, yeah.
So I.
I mean, you were caught too. I'm not sure.
Nobody.
You are our agents.
I know, it was, it's a unique situation and the timing on signing on the payroll for that week, signing off on it, initialing it when it came up, didn't allow for it to come here.
And missing payroll, it comes with huge fines. We get it, Robin. But so I'm going to move to approve a $2,100 stipend for the finance director.
Under these circumstances.
Under the relevant circumstances.
I'll second Jamie's motion.
Did you say you ratified? Let's make sure that ratification's in there because we're approving something that already.
Yeah, it puts it on the record that you did not choose, you as a board did not choose to do this. Absolutely.
Okay, ratified or $2,100.
I'll still second Jamie's motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
I still abstain.
Your trouble.
My middle name. Okay, next, we have consideration and action to appoint, oh no, we need a selectman to serve on the Housing Partnership Committee. This came up at our last meeting, but we didn't have a full board, so.
When is the, when are the meetings going to be?
Well, they haven't organized yet. They're still getting. Robin, have your hat.
There's been no discussion yet of when that's going to meet or what the schedule's going to be for that. So we've got the representative from planning, we've got a representative tonight, we'll get in from here, we have finances representative. I have not even appointed yet the, I wanted to get these in place and then I'll appoint the, and bring them forward to the public members. We have several applications, about what, five? Three positions, four, four maybe for three positions?
Four or five.
And I believe I have three, three appointments to present to you. So I'm going through those now, but I wanted to at least get the, the board appointments.
Okay, is anyone willing?
I'll do it if it's, I know Ian is a new baby.
Alum. And I would support whoever does it as an alternate. If you can't make a meeting and you communicate it to us, I would attend to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm bad, because then Chase just did the TA board, she just did the ARPA board, Ian's got a baby. So it's like.
I want to bring up, these ever can be like a rotating seat where we all take a turn and.
Well, you have to read the.
I think, yeah, I think it was.
It's a hard to read.
It's for so many years term.
Yeah, but it's specified in the, what we ratified at town meeting.
Oh, right, right. And it goes back to what we were talking about last week about trying to get these boards and commissions on a cycle.
I know, I told Michelle, I'm going to go back a couple of years because in the annual report, it used to have when all the appointments were up. And now we're getting all the appointments up at the same time, which was never the intention. It was always, you know, this one was this year, that one was next year, two were, even on the elected positions, the board is that way, two one year, two one year and one. But now we're getting everybody in September. So I told Michelle I'd go back and see what I could.
We have to weed through and again, talk about the bylaw of where we make these all July 1st to July 1st and then stagger the years.
Yeah, because that's.
Because then that's where the confusion comes in. It's November of one year, let's say it's, you know, November of '22 and January of '23, someone else on the same board expires, one's a two-year, one's a three-year, but at what point in the year?
Yeah, that's why we had town council's opinion to make it July 1st to June 30th and.
We'll put bylaw language in for town meeting this year to.
Oh, yeah, clarify. But I'll go back and read because it used to be easy to go through that way. You knew who was up and when they were up.
And we have a software that's supposed to make it easier and it doesn't.
That's true. Okay, so somebody want to nominate Jamie then?
I will nominate Jamie Goodwin.
Too willing, Mary.
And I also am willing, if, I'll be an alternate as well.
No, I can make work out, flexible. I work for us.
Yeah, that's true.
I nominate Jamie Goodwin.
You work for the town, don't you?
And I, and I nominate Ian Dunneken to be alternate number one.
I will second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. See now, even this one, Larry Morrison for the Personnel Committee, he's taken the place of the person that was on the Finance Committee, that was, and I'm sure her term didn't expire in 2025.
Should actually, this should actually expire at the end of her term, what would have been hers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we might want to just put a caveat on that one.
Yeah.
That one should expire for the remainder of the current term.
Of Joni Brights.
Yes.
Joni Lights.
And then he could be renewed after that if.
Yeah.
Yeah. That should be clarified. That one should be clarified, that's the remainder of the term.
Yeah, because he's from the FinCom. Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
Sure, I will move to appoint Larry Morrison to the Personnel Committee for a term to expire. Am I using this date or just?
No, when.
The remainder of the term.
The remainder of the term, you gotcha. For the, for the remainder of the term.
Of Joni Lights.
Of Joni Lights, yeah.
She's the FinCom rep.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, next one is consideration, possible action to appoint Paula Copaz, PhD, to the Sturbridge Lakes Association Committee as the Lead Mine Lake Association Representative for a term to expire September 19th, 2025. It's always the little things that get me. We'll get it strained out, Michelle. Somebody want to make a motion or?
Are we good with that date? Or are we doing a different term?
Maybe just say expiration of the term.
Yeah, see, I don't know.
Was she filling for someone who left or was she filling for someone whose term ended and they didn't renew? That we'd have to just check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you put those words and then.
I will make a motion to appoint Paula Copaz, PhD, to the Sturbridge Lakes Association Committee as a Lead Mine Lake Association Representative for a term to expire on a date to be determined. Second.
All those in favor? Okay, the next one is to reappoint Thomas Chamberlain to the Trails Committee for a term to expire.
Yeah, so he, he had expired, his should have been a reappointment for a full term. There had been some confusion. He should have actually, I think, been reappointed before I even came. He expired, I think, in April or. Prior to my coming here and there, yeah, and there had been a, some question about.
In Mr. Chamberlain's case, could we just make an exception and just appoint him for life? Just because we know he's not going to.
Emeritus. We can always make him a meritus when he doesn't want to be doing.
No, because he's saying he's moving more to.
But he is, yes, yes. But he is currently still a Sturbridge resident.
Right.
So how about this? I move to reappoint Tom Chamberlain to the Trails Committee from the date of expiration of his previous term to September 19th, 2025.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Haven't shifted these. Okay, the next is consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from part-time firefighter Anthony Gianfredo, effective September 13th, 2022. He's moving out of town. Any questions, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from part-time firefighter Anthony Gianfredo with regret, effective September 13th, 2022.
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, consideration and possible action to accept a donation, the amount of $200 from CMG Environmental of 67 Hall Road, Sturbridge, to the Sturbridge Fire Department.
Move to accept a donation of $200 from CMG Environmental at 67 Hall Road with thanks.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, next, consideration and possible action on the application for transient vendor license for Wendy Collins slash Collins Gifts for the Doll and Bear Show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on October 2nd, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Any questions?
She's had this for.
Oh, yeah.
Every year for many years.
Many years.
Okay, is the motion?
I will move to accept the transient vendor license for Wendy Collins, Collins Gifts for the Doll and Bear Show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel, October 2nd and 2022, from 10:00 to 3:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, and then we did have one that came in today for Alexandra, I'm sorry Alexandra, Ava, Avales, okay, for a Hocker and Pedler license.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, so I'm currently working for Trinity Solar, so I would be canvassing neighborhoods here in Sturbridge, going door to door.
Okay, and we do have, Mary will explain.
A mask requirement. Well, while we're still in this kind of fluid state and they're not expecting you, so if you could approach people with a mask on.
Absolutely.
Be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Also time-wise.
Oh, and time-wise, yeah. I know, refresh my recollection, we do restrict the timing. Is it dusk that we don't want anybody be on?
Right, be on dusk. And dusk is.
Seven, 6:30 now.
Yeah.
It would be 4:30.
Yep, and I have been actually going door to door in North Brookfield, same thing, until 7 o'clock. It's going to very soon be getting dark even earlier than that. If I have an appointment set, is it okay to, obviously, meet?
That's a little bit different.
That's an exception.
Most residents don't want somebody coming to their door at night.
Nope, and I would have an hour commute back home, so I would like to avoid that.
She wants to get out of Dodge quickly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we put dusk instead of a specific time because it changes. Okay, so somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
I will move to accept the Hocker Pedler license for Alexandra Avales with a mask requirement and a time restriction of dusk. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Jane?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for patiently waiting.
Mask.
You're making sense at least.
I love having Bluetooth in the car now though, because when I do talk to myself, it doesn't matter because she can look like you're on the phone.
Good night, everyone. Good night. Hope it's not raining on you.
Government's going to keep that for a file.
Yes, they will. There probably a few red flags on me already.
Watch out for that one.
Yeah. Okay, old business. Ian?
I have none.
Chase?
The only old I wanted to say, I'm coaching flag football and I noticed the fields are getting redone with our opera funds, so that's positive news up at Burgess.
Yeah, they're very excited, moving on that.
Yeah, that's good.
Rain's helping.
Yes, yeah.
Is that the noise I hear on Sundays? Is that what's going on back there? We were here, we heard a lot of cheering yesterday, so which is great because it sounds like everybody's getting out and supporting it, so it's good, yeah.
Very competitive.
I have a meeting with the assistant principal.
Oh, good.
And Annie next week about the major work over Burgess Field.
Good.
And we did end up supporting, I did indicate that as far as my interpretation was that bases and trash barrels, provided they are in the dugout area, are part of infield renovations.
That was an incidental expense, I think. They should have been told.
It was, particularly if they're down near the dugouts, that's part of infield, so we're fine. But we'll have an interesting meeting, I'm looking forward to meeting with them. I had a nice tour of Burgess School.
Isn't it something?
It's beautiful. And so we're going to meet on that field and see what we can do to really enhance that back there.
Okay, anything else? Chase?
Mary? Well, this was something I wanted to bring up and it kind of refreshed my recollection when we were talking about the finance department having vacancies. For a long time, we had exit interviews when employees left and the selectmen would also look at them to get, you know, some input as to why people leave, you know, just to, if there's anything we can do better. And I know, I think we probably, Mary was on the board with me when we had it because there was a time period when we did have quite a few exiting.
But it was all volunteer. There was nothing when we hired somebody.
Different than a termination or, yeah.
There was nothing upfront that, you know, would you be willing to do an exit interview? But I think it's very valuable. I do know the last one we did, I found very valuable.
Of course, and it is voluntary totally, but it just helps us moving forward when we lose an employee for, that we've had for many years and they take a job someplace else. It's nice to know, you know, what was the reason? Was it more money? Was it they just needed a change? Did they not like their working conditions? And all of that is helpful information, so if we want to institute that again, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but.
Certainly maybe presenting them with the option as opposed to them having to ask, they at least are offered.
Correct, we initiate it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Jamie, any old?
Nope.
I have none. New business? Ian?
I have none.
Chase?
I have no new.
Mary?
No.
No.
They can't hear you, you're rattling.
I'm not going to comment any further, it'll be inappropriate.
Then you'll have the money, then you're going to have the money.
And I have none. Correspondence?
Am I supposed to read it right? Do we still get a sheet of paper anymore? We used to get a sheet of paper with correspondence.
I didn't see any. There was no.
There was none.
I didn't know, dear.
Yeah, there was none listed.
We haven't really been getting-
We haven't remembered anything coming in this week that I got. Usually I get copies.
In the past, Michelle, I mean, it's fine if the board doesn't want it. When we have correspondence, we usually just have one page that says to, from and the date and just a little subscript about what it was. Charta spectrum changing their rate.
When we came back in person, the correspondence just seemed to fall off. Seems like there's not as much going on.
Should I take that off the agenda if there is no correspondence?
Well, no, I mean, we can leave it there because, because one of us might have gotten something for the whole board at the last minute.
Sometimes you'll get something in the dictionary, all get something.
But if we all get something, you just put it so that people who are viewing, because those are public documents. And a, a letter might interest them and they have the right to come in and look at it.
Yep.[1613.83]